And, go ahead.
Good evening, welcome to the Glen Rock Planning Board. Today's October 6th, 2025. Please all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Morley.
Here.
Mayor Moriko. Councilwoman Cole.
Here.
Chief Ackerman.
Here.
Ms. Triforis.
Here.
Mr. Solowski.
Here.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Dr. Pucci.
Here.
Tracy, would you please read the sunshine law?
In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which went into effect January 19th, 1976, I hereby state that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: Posting of the notice on bulletin board outside these chambers, mailing of the notice to the Ridgewood News, and filing of the notice outside the Borough Clerk's office on January 17th, 2025. In addition to the foregoing, a notice was posted on the bulletin board in January of 2025, setting forth the regularly scheduled meetings for the year. A copy of the schedule was published in the Bergen Record on January 15th, 2025.
Okay, next item is approval of the September 2nd, 2025 work session minutes. Is there any... Separate, because some people may not have... Any discussion on the September 2nd, 2025 minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tracy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Morley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Ms. Triforis.
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
Mr. Valero.
Yes.
Dr. Pucci.
Yes.
Are there any comments on the September 4th, 2025 regular meeting minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Morley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Ms. Triforis.
I don't believe I was here for that one.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
Mr. Valero.
Yes.
And Ms. Dr. Pucci.
Yes.
First item on the agenda is 400 Hamilton. We've all received the letter with recommendations for upgrades to the press box at the high school. Is there any discussion on the recommendation letter? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tracy, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Ms. Triforis.
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
Mr. Valero.
Yes.
Dr. Pucci.
Yes.
Mr. Morley.
Yes. We're gonna go out of order on the agenda a little bit. The next item is going to be 567 South Broad Street. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension of previously granted preliminary and final site plan approval to conduct a single-story warehouse with office space. Any discussion on this? Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Ms. Triforis.
Yes.
Mr. Solowski.
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
Mr. Valero.
Yes.
Dr. Pucci.
Yes.
Mr. Morley.
Yes. The next item will be Mayfair Remodeling Corporation. The applicant is seeking a minor site plan approval for the removal of a portion of the building and a waiver for size of parking spaces. Existing onsite parking is two spaces, and removal of a portion of the building will provide six onsite parking spaces. The waiver requested is for nine by 18 spaces and all other variants and waivers in connection with this application.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can you just hit your mics on, please? Just a button. Thank you.
Green.
Yep, it'll stay on.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, council. My name is Matt Rogers, I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant on this matter. 366 South Maple Avenue. By way of... By way of introduction on this, this property is in the C1 zone in Glen Rock and was before this board, or maybe the zoning board, back in 2021 on a certificate of occupancy application. At that time, it was recognized that this was an existing facility, and my client moved his business into it. The business itself is used as an office space and a showroom for business materials. Appointments are made by all the... But most of their customers, it's not the type of place you just drop into and begin to, you know, look around or test things out, usually by appointment. However, there were some deficiencies with the property that were recognized by the board back at that time. And I think if you refer to Mr. Vinci's engineering letter dated August 4th of 2025, he does a very good job of just summing up what the issues are that are before the board. But basically, what's going on with this application is my applicant wants to improve the property, wants to bring it into greater conformity with the ordinances and zoning requirements of the borough. And as you can see from that particular zoning schedule on the third page of the five-page letter from Mr. Vinci, the front yard setback is no change. There's no work being done to the front yards or the side yards, except for the fact that in the rear yard, they're removing 359 square feet. It's about, basically, or maybe more than that, they're removing 20 by 27-foot section of the building in the rear. And the reason they're doing this is to provide an area for more parking. So the... So one of the things that's happening, first of all, is that there's an improvement in the distance from the building to the rear yard property, which is a residence. So instead of the 9.8 feet which exists, it's now going to be 29.9 feet, just shy of 30 feet. So that's an improvement, and it's bringing it into greater conformity with... Certainly surpasses the 10-foot of the 25-foot setback distance that's required. So because it butts a residential district and a residence, 25 feet is required, so he's surpassing what's required by removing this section of the building. The other issue that he wanted to do is that we're not increasing the height, because the height stays within conformity. The stories of the building stay in conformity. We're not changing the side yard setback. But what we're trying to do is provide as many parking spaces as we can in this area. Now, the engineering letter is mostly a lot about, and I think if you all read it, it's a lot about the drainage, to make sure that when this area gets paved for parking, that the drainage doesn't spill onto any adjacent sites. So what has been done is that there's been discussions between my client's engineer and the... and Mr. Vinci with regard to having the property slope and the parking lot slope from the northwest corner towards the southeast. So bringing it towards the front of the build... Towards the front of the property, but on the... On the Highwood Road side of the building. So if you're familiar with that, Highwood Road is one-way, and this is gonna bring that drainage there. That's gonna be the slope. There are actually two detention basins that are provided in this engineering project, and we're gonna satisfy those requirements and those things from your engineer. There's been discussions between the borough engineer and my client's engineer to the point where we agree that all the recommendations that are coming from the engineering's office are things that we can comply with. There's one aspect of it that we'd just like to be heard on, which is a reference to it on the first page of the August 4th, 2005 letter. The bottom paragraph, where it says that our office has no objection to the granting of the submission waiver, provided that the applicant provides testimony during the hearing regarding trash storage and collection operations, and agrees to provide a trash enclosure if required by the board. We'd just like to elicit a little bit of testimony with regard to that from my client and how that might work, and then he'll certainly be open for any other questions that the board may have with regard to this project. But again, this whole project is about trying to improve the property, bring it into greater conformity with the zoning requirements in the C1 zone, and improve the relationship that the building and the property has with the residential neighbors in the area. You know that there's not a lot of parking in that area. And the... and, you know, for people that might want to come in, there's not parking for people who may want to come in for an appointment. So we'll just wanna get some testimony with regard to that so that the board has an understanding of how this operates. And without that, I'd just ask for my client to be sworn in.
Sure. Please raise your right hand. Do you promise the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Newton Olivera.
Newton, you said?
Yes.
And your address?
Home address?
Yes, or business address.
366 South Maple Avenue in Glen Rock.
Thank you.
May I begin?
Yes.
Okay. Are you the owner of Mayfair Remodeling Corp?
Yes.
Okay, what kind of a business is that?
Roofing siding, like remodeling business.
Okay. And you operate your business out of the location of 366 South Maple Ave. in Glen Rock, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what do you have at that location? What presently exists there now, and what's involved in the business operations at that site?
Just a small showroom with roofing samples, windows and siding samples. Just me and my wife in the office. And 99% of the people that come in is by appointment.
Okay. And how frequently, you know, is it something that you're operating like a fast food or a Wawa or something like that, a 7-Eleven? Or is it much quieter than that?
Way quieter than that.
And how many people would you say you have in that need to find parking on a regular basis in that area?
Pretty much everyone that comes in is looking to park. They normally go across the street to the medical building and have to cross the street, which is a busy street. And there's no cross line either. So it's kinda dangerous for them.
There's no crosswalk on South Maple in the area of Highwood?
Correct.
Right? Okay. And when you... With this proposed project, you plan on tearing down a rear section of your existing building in the location, correct?
That's correct.
And you're not gonna build a new section there? You're gonna put in parking, right?
That's correct.
And is the intent here to put in as many parking spaces as you can?
Yes.
Did the... Is one of the spaces that you intend on putting in an ADA, American Disabilities Act, compliant?
Yes.
With... for parking?
That's correct.
That's correct. And you're decreasing the impervious area, the impervious percentages on the property from 100% to 89.1%. Is that correct?
That's correct.
By doing this? There's been talk about, from the engineering office, about putting in some plantings to kind of spruce up or at least present a buffer that may be required by the town. Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. When it comes to garbage and trash, you said that it's only you and your wife that are present at the location. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have any other employees that sit there, or you don't serve food? You don't have any type of facilities other than just the showroom for materials and a bathroom, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So when it comes to trash and things like that, what do you do now?
So normally, I keep inside the building in a container, and I bring it out on my own.
And you take it away on your own?
I take it away, correct.
Okay. Is that something you'd like to continue to do?
Yes.
Is there... If you were to try and put a trash enclosure in the rear of the property, what effect might that have on some of the parking? I guess depending upon the size of the enclosure, correct?
That's correct. We might take a parking spot away.
Okay. And this is something that you've handled from the interior of the building on a regular basis since you've been operating there since 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the... If you're required to put an enclosure, you would do so, but would you... Is it your wish or desire to try and continue to be able to do it on your own?
I'd like to continue doing it on my own.
The... Now, you've talked with your engineer about how many spaces you can put in on the site. Would you agree that... You're proposing here tonight that a total of six parking spaces in the rear there?
Yes.
Okay. And as I said before, one of them is ADA compliant. Correct?
Correct.
If there are requirements coming from the engineering office about directional lighting and things like that, you're willing to do that?
Yes.
And have you had the chance to read the August 2nd letter, August 4th letter from Mr. Vinci with regard to the conditions of approval that is from a design comment standpoint? Are you willing to adhere to those?
Yes.
I have nothing further of Mr. Oliveri unless any of the board members have any questions.
Do any board members have any questions for this witness?
I have a question. This section that you're removing, what is in that space now?
All the windows. Sometimes we order the wrong size, and it's there for now.
So it's like stock?
Yeah, storage.
Storage. And where would you put that once that section is gone?
We have a full basement, which is empty.
Okay.
Could you clarify on what kind of... You have a storage... You have materials onsite, and it comes in commercial packages and... How much transit do you have in and out of your facility?
So most of the materials that we order go straight to the jobs, don't go there, then go to the job, go straight to the job.
So you just have samples at your location?
Right.
So you're not receiving much... Many packages daily, on a daily basis? It's pretty fixed?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe once every two months, we get a small package, which is like...
Okay. And so the small amount of garbage that you might accumulate during the day, it's just like one garbage bag?
Yeah, it's two people.
Okay. And how do you dispose of it? You bring it?
Bring it home sometimes.
Bring it home?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from board members?
Do you have any other tenants in that property right now in the other store spaces?
No, it's just us.
And the entire building? I know previously there have been other small stores in there. The entire building now is going to be entirely your operation?
Yes. So there's six units.
Yes.
I own three, and there's three owned by somebody else.
Okay.
So I only... I have the three in the corner, which we use the entire building.
And that's the... Right, the units that are directly adjacent to the intersection of South Maple and Highwood, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you have two tenants? Is that correct?
No, no, it's just us.
Oh, just you? You use all...
He owns the past building.
Okay, use all the units.
The other house is a different owner with the other tenant.
Okay. I thought there was three units that you mentioned.
So you had a CO? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, back in 2021, because he was moving in, he needed a certificate of occupancy, so he applied for that and received it from the board with the deficiencies in parking and the setbacks as they were at the time, the existing building. Now, he was trying to come back before the board to try and approve it, bring more parking in, and separate the building further from the residence that he was only nine feet away from before, but now he's gonna be 29 feet away.
Is this parking gonna be exclusively for your customers and for yourself, I guess, and your wife? Or would you anticipate parking construction vehicles there?
No, I only have one van that's gonna be parked there, and me and my wife. Overnight, one van.
Right, overnight.
That's it.
Are any of the spaces that are along South Maple in front of your building, are they dedicated to your usage?
No.
They're just general usage for that whole strip?
That's correct.
The strip mall?
And they're not even striped there, in that area, yeah?
Okay.
There's also a bus stop directly in front of your building, correct?
It's not in front of the building, more towards the left of my building.
Okay.
Yeah.
But part of the parking is not parking, it's a bus stop?
Across the street, yes.
Yep.
I have a few questions. Mr. Rogers made us a question for you. Would you know specifically if a trash container is required by our ordinance?
Specifically, no. I was paying... I was following the lead from the engineer with regard to his...
If it were to be required, where would you place it?
I think that's for the applicant, not for Mr. Rogers.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mr. Oliveri, if it was required by ordinance to put a trash container in the back, where would you put it?
Well, we'd have to take a parking spot away.
But where would you put it? What would be the best location if you had to do it?
If it was required, I don't know if it's required.
I guess you would use the parking on the left towards the back of the property?
Would it interfere with some of the parking spaces?
That's for sure.
Maybe our board engineer can comment?
Right, well, the requirement... Let me finish my questions, please.
Can he answer your question, though? Because that's an interesting...
I have a few more questions.
But can he answer that one before you move on to another one?
You wanna...
Yeah.
Answer a question? Go ahead.
The ordinance just requires the recycling be addressed. So it didn't necessarily have to be a dumpster or anything. If they want to keep the pails outside, or the boards felt that they needed an enclosure, you can ask for that. Or if you're satisfied with the way they're storing the trash now, that's fine, too.
For a commercial building, retail, you don't need a trash container?
It doesn't really say that it's necessarily required. They had to submit some sort of a proposal that's satisfactory to the board. But if it is outside, then it does need to be in some sort of an enclosed area. But you can't just have pails outside. You know, it needs to be in an orderly fashion.
And it'll probably interfere with the parking?
There's some grass landscaping behind there. I mean, if you wanted to have a small fenced-in area for some pails, I think there's room for it. I'm not sure they necessarily need a dumpster, something larger for the operations they're describing.
I agree. So you have no parking on South Highwood, right? There's no parking... There's no street parking on South Maple?
Well, there is parking on South Maple, but it's very narrow.
It's narrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you ever have employees? How many years you been there?
How many years? Four years.
Four? Did you ever have employees at your location?
Just me and my wife.
Just you and your wife? And your basement, is that used for any...
It's for storage.
Storage?
Yeah.
So basically, you don't have no employees, you and your wife, and you require six spaces just for customers?
Yeah.
Only because it's required by the code. That part is required by your ordinance.
But didn't you have a variance at some point?
It was not a variance, per se. It was with the application for the certificate of occupancy back in 2021. It was recognized basically as a deficiency, and there was an existing condition on the property, and they were permitted to move in with those existing conditions. So, yes, it was... But I don't believe there was an actual variance application.
I understand.
I didn't represent Mr. Oliveri at that time.
Fine, I understand. But that was 2021?
2021.
Any reason why it took you five years or four years to...
Well, I think any time to do an improvement like this... We've been actually working on this for years, so we've been trying to... You know, my client's been trying to improve the property and make it more compatible with the area. And frankly, I think any time would be the right time to do that. But he wasn't required to do it as part of the CO, so...
I understand. This is the question I have in my mind. Do you have any intention to build above your store?
Not at all.
And what are your hours of operation?
From eight to four.
I'm sorry?
Eight to four.
Eight to four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have nothing further, thank you.
I've got a follow-up question to Joe. If it seems the amount of trash that's being generated in this business is not much different than a residence, it seems, why couldn't they also just use a, you know, a trash can like households do?
They could. That's what I was trying to explain, is that the ordinance doesn't necessarily require a dumpster or it doesn't specify how the trash is actually contained. It's just saying that, basically, if there's some sort of... If it's kept outside, it needs to be enclosed in some sort of an orderly fashion. So if you felt you wanted, rather than the cans inside, you wanted them to be put outside, that's fine. But it should be in some sort of a fenced area on some sort of a concrete, you know, even a sidewalk, something like that. It's, you know...
Does the borough ever pick up trash for a commercial business?
No.
No.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up to that question, if I may, would it be a major problem for you just to get like two standard-sized residential garbage cans and put them in like a Rubbermaid-type container, like many people do at their homes?
I feel that.
I think... Because I think that would... I think that would satisfy it. I don't think you'd need a dumpster. I don't think you would lose a parking space. That might be a good compromise. And also, if you move on and someone else buys the property, at least there's something there.
Could like a 5x10 fenced-in area or something like that, and you just put some garbage, the pails, out there in that area? You have a problem with that?
Oh, 5x10? I think you'd have to ask you if the 5x10 would take up a parking space.
No, we'd put it in the grass, so...
In that grass area? Yeah, I know where you're talking.
So, I have actually... One thing for the record, just to clarify, there was an error in the parking requirement calculation. I come up with seven spots required instead of six, which I don't know why the prior resolution had five required, but it's seven. So that it's correct, and the variance is correct.
Because I was going with your report.
Yeah, I noticed I made a mistake, too. Because I took it from here, and the building is 1840, and it looks like when they did the parking calculation, it was 1480. The two numbers just got there and closed.
Gotcha.
But it's immaterial. I mean, the site's the site. They're making the building smaller, so if anything, the parking demand's going down. And then the only other thing I had was... I'm still not fully satisfied with the way the drainage and the grading is laid out. I don't think it has anything that's gonna affect the application in terms of the board. The building is the building. They're gonna get the two spots. It just... We may do some of the grading differently. Right now, the impervious coverage is at 100%, and they're showing 89.1. If we gotta add in the trash enclosure, and we may make some modifications to the grading, which might require some additional sidewalk area for the ramps, can the resolution just basically say that there may be a reduction? Rather than putting in there 89.1 this way, if it changes a little bit, they don't have to return to the board?
And for the record, my client was agreed to adhere to whatever Mr. Vinci said under recommendations.
It's close enough. I've talked to Mr. Hauser. I think we just may have to meet out there and come up with something a little different. It's not gonna be a substantial change. It would be pretty minor in nature. And certainly, it's gonna be equal to or less than what they have now, so...
Any other questions by the board?
I have one other quick question. Do you anticipate, or maybe you don't anticipate, that your parking lot might be used by some clients from the other side of the building? Since there's no parking for them either?
I don't think so. So across the street is a gas station, which they have parking there. And across the street from South Maple, people don't even know there's parking unless... I mean, I can guarantee that, but I don't think that's the case.
They would have to walk around, correct?
They'd have to walk around with no access.
There would be no access for their space, so...
Right now, they're walking across the street.
Right, well, that may be a little easier, but...
If you build it, they will come. But if you supply the parking, they may use it, but, you know, that is something that you'd have to try and enforce and deal with themselves.
Well, maybe the resolution would allow them just to put a sign up to say that parking's for this site only. But not required, but if it becomes an operational issue.
If it becomes an operational issue, there are actually signage required by the Department of Community Affairs that's set forth in statute that could be put on there.
that set forth in statute that could be put on there.
Any other questions by board members? If not, I'll open up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to have questions of the applicant?
Comments?
Any?
Is there a question? Could there be comments?
Do any members of the public have any comments they'd like to make?
What about the board members? Anyone have any comments?
Board members have any comments?
I'll just make a quick comment. I live near that area. It's kind of my neighborhood. And the parking there is horrible. So I think this is an improvement that's well needed. And I commend you for making your property, your piece of, your building smaller so that you can accommodate parking. I think it's a good improvement.
Thank you.
I, I would echo that also. How long have you been in business? For four, four years, correct?
In the area.
In Glen Rock. So here we have an up-and-coming company, business, looking to improve on, on your space, helping out the neighborhood. I think I agree. I think this is something that we should encourage. Business is all to do, improve, and I commend you. Thank, thank you for your presentations.
I, I just add that, you know, over the course of the almost last 40 years, I've seen so many businesses that have been in there that have failed due to the lack of parking. I, I think this is an excellent move. I certainly support it.
Mr. Vencey said that he would have to put up a five-by-ten fenced-in area for garbage? Because, I mean, with the amount of garbage he's talking about, it seemed like just what, what Chief Ackerman was describing, just one of those. I mean, I have one in my house, like a two-and-a-half-by-five-foot Rubbermaid container that holds two standard garbage bins for a house.
Maybe we might be able to make it smaller by eight. I'm just, plan is ten. I'm sure Mr. Hauser will come up with something that's appropriate.
We'll let that happen. I mean, that's, you can, you can agree. They'll work that out.
Okay, just give me a second.
Yeah, there's a couple of conditions, so.
I don't have any other witnesses. I want to just thank the board for their time. And thank you for holding the floor area ratio discussion after our.
You could stay if you want.
Okay, Heather, would you?
Yes.
Recite the.
So there would be just a couple of conditions. Basically, the, the, the garbage will be worked out with the board engineer. Something similar to five-by-ten fenced-in area, maybe smaller. Something like, an example would be two standard containers and a Rubbermaid container. But that will be worked out. There also may be a, because of the drainage layout, may be changed by the board engineer. There may be a reduction in impervious coverage. And one of the conditions will just be that it will be subject to approval by the board engineer. And.
The date of that letter, right?
August.
Well, it wouldn't be a reduction from the plan. It would probably be a reduction from existing. What I'm saying is if we had to work it out, I may, but when we get done, there may be more impervious than what's shown on this particular plan.
Right. Well, the proposal's 89%.
Right.
That's what.
But it might be, it might be 92, 93, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
We understand that.
Okay. And the last condition I would have is if there is an operational issue, that there could be possible signage that the parking is only for this business. Those are the three that I have.
Okay.
Any other recommended conditions by the board members?
And that this, this wasn't really discussed, but that there would be a waiver of the size of the spaces. So it would be nine by 18 instead of 10 by 20.
Yes.
There were some other standard conditions. I don't know if you want to include them or not, recommend in the letter.
That's all in your August fourth letter?
I mean, we could also, we would also say that the August 4th, 2025 letter, that all conditions will be met.
That's up to the board.
In the board engineer's correspondence.
Okay, understood. Given those, those conditions, do I hear a motion to approve this application?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
To Councilwoman Cole.
Yes.
Chief Ackerman.
Yes.
Mr. Triforres.
Yes.
Mr. Solowski.
Yes.
Mr. Diaz Pizito.
Yes.
Mr. Bolero.
Yes.
And Mr. Morel.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you. You feel better?
Come see me for permits.
Bye, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
So you can, I don't, we don't, I don't think we need, you don't need to stay for this next part.
But feel free.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
You can scoot up.
Okay. So first, I'd like to thank the public for the comments that have been made in the past couple of work sessions that we've had. They've been very helpful. And we also look forward to testimony and comments this evening as well. I, I just, just for the benefit of the public, I want to give a little background. This discussion on reforming EGFar, which is our regula, which is the method that is currently used for regulating the mass of residential buildings in Glen Rock. There was discussion among the town council about whether this regulation was effective and whether it was meeting the goals of the master plan, going back sometime last year, beginning sometime last year. And earlier this year, the town. Yeah, earlier this year, the, the town council asked the planning board to look at the master plan and to see if the current bulk regulations on District One and District Two residential districts, if they're meeting the goals and objectives of the master plan. And so we set up a subcommittee, and we've had, the subcommittee met, met several times. And as I mentioned, we had a couple of work sessions over the past month. And we've developed some recommendations that are preliminary at this point. And I also want to point out that this is a review of permitted development, okay? Which meaning that there's been a lot of, I believe that there's been discussion in town that this was a response to certain applications for variance before the zoning board, and that's not the case. This is just a review, sort of a performance review, if you will, of how the regulations are working and whether they're serving their purpose or not. And as a result of that review, we find that the current regulations have opened the door to interpretation and fail to adequately address the problems they were intended to solve. That is, they allow for oversized development that adversely affects neighbors and the community and is inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan. And as I mentioned, and as we discussed last Monday at the work session, we have some preliminary recommendations for the council that are subject to change based on what we hear this evening. But I'll go over what the current preliminary recommendations are. And it, the first one is to replace EGFar with a maximum principal building coverage approach. Now, EGFar is based, is a method of limiting the mass of residential development. And it does that by looking at the square footage, the internal square, total internal square footage of the residence compared to the lot size of the property. Now, the alternative that we're looking at, maximum principal building coverage, takes a different approach. It, it's also trying to address mass, which is the appearance of a, of a building from the street and how it blends into the community. That's what mass or bulk is. So in, that maximum principal building coverage approach looks at the footprint of the building from a sky view. And it limits, it shrinks the allowable footprint from, the current allow, amount in both districts is 25%. The, what's, what's proposed and what's, what we're currently recommending is that in the A1 district, we reduce the principal building coverage from 25% to 14% with a cap of 2,750 square feet regardless of lot size. And in A2 district, reducing building coverage from 25% to 18% with a cap of 2,200 square feet regardless of lot size. These measurements will continue to use the lot, will continue to use lot size measured from 175 feet from the front property line in District A1 and 140 feet in District A2. In both zones, an exception of 2% principal building coverage can, can be allowed to open, for, for open-roofed structures attached to the principal building, including covered porches, covered decks and patios, arbors, trellises, pergolas, and similar structures. There would also be limits for maximum total building coverage, which includes the principal building plus any accessory buildings. Maximum accessory building foot, footprint would be defined. These terms will be defined, including accessory building, in the, in the new ordinance. The limits would vary by structure. Through this approach, we understand building mass can be significantly reduced. And with effective, efficient design, would not significantly reduce livable internal floor area. A second recommendation we have is that there should be a maximum front yard setback of 50 feet to preserve streetscape aesthetics. There's currently a minimum front yard setback, which is 50 feet or the.
Average setback.
Average, or, or the average in the community, the average on the block. It's based on an average setback study. The third recommendation we have is that building height should be measured from pre-construction grade level so that it can't be manipulated by changing the grade during construction. Now, since we just, the board discussed this recently last week, I would suggest that we forego discussions until we hear further testimony from our local architects and, and members of the public. And then we can discuss our view at that time. Is that agreeable?
Yep.
Everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just one, one point I'd like to make. I honestly feel that having this discussion about this proposed changes is way premature. I mean, we still haven't heard from, like you indicated, two other witnesses, another architect.
But that's exactly what we're about to do.
I think it's premature to discuss.
Well, we're not, we're not discussing it yet. We're, we're going to hear from these people first.
I'd like to hear from everybody, then digest it and take time to think about it, and then have our own discussion.
Yes, and we, we can discuss that after we hear from everybody.
Good, thank you.
Okay? No. Ms. Paredes and Mr. Gasnik, I, I understand that we're going to have the benefit of your testimony this evening, if you'd like to come forward. We all received your, your report, and we thank you for it.
Yeah.
Can you do it in the middle?
Yes.
That will, thank you. Press the button.
We could swear both of them in it.
Yeah, okay.
It's on.
Both at the same time? Yeah, after. I'm just going to swear in both, both at this, both of you. Do you promise the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Please, first state your name for the record.
Siomara Paredes.
And what's your address?
240 Rock Road, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
And please state your name.
My name is Jeffrey Gasnik, also 240 Rock Road, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to give us your presentation on this subject?
Sure.
We appreciate your views.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to, to speak in front of this board and to discuss the possible changes that are going to be made to the Glen Rock ordinance, particularly on building coverage and EGFar. My office is in Glen Rock, and I've been there for 25 years. But my experience working in Glen Rock has been more than 30 years. And through all these years, I have experienced being in front of the board numerous times. And I'm very familiar with the Glen Rock ordinance. During this time, I have also appeared in front of several different boards across Bergen County in similar towns in character, which is Richwood, Oradell, and Ho-Hokus. So with me is Jeffrey Gasnik, that is the project manager at my firm. And he is in charge of the, all the, preparing the drawings and all the zoning information for all variances in Glen Rock and all these towns that I previously mentioned. So the two of us have taken the task to analyze the flaws that EGFar has had during all these years. 20 years ago, about 20 years, 22 years, I don't remember exactly. But Glen Rock was without an EGFar. And it was only, the, the volume was controlled only by having the building coverage. Excuse me. And that was at the time when all the McMansions were racing all over. And they were taking the, the properties with small houses. And it was a, an invasion of McMansions all the way around the, the towns around here. So at that time, all our towns, that means Glen Rock, Richwood, Oradell, and Ho-Hokus, took some form of controlling the volume. And we call it EGFar. The, the, Richwood calls it GBA. And every town has a different name, but the intent is the same, to control the volume. So far, all the towns that I mentioned have been very successful about controlling the volume with this, this concept, except us. And it's because they, the, the EGFar, even though was implemented, it was never refined. And it's all about details. So we're here tonight to explain what the flaws are that we have found in the EGFar and how we can change it, what modifications we can make to make it work. But I think that we shouldn't go back, go backwards, and go back to not having an EGFar and, and dismiss it altogether and go back to the building coverage only. And we should instead analyze what went wrong and what doesn't work and modify it and fix it. So, so we're here tonight to, to list the modifications that we think what doesn't work and how we can fix. So the first thing was that we are in total agreement with the, the tools that we have been using to control the volume. And that is the setbacks, the building coverage, and the building height. Those are no doubt a, a good tools to control the volume. However, they, only those three are not sufficient to control the volume. Because they control volume, but they don't control the. they control volume, but they don't control the overall volume of homes. And what I mean by that is that EG Far, by definition, is controlling and regulating the the second floor and the attic, the levels above the footprint of a house. So if we go by building coverage only, we are putting the limit on the footprint. So as a result, people are going to maximize that footprint. If we don't have an EG Far, people are going to maximize the second floor and the attic because they are free now to have any areas that they have, that they they want, as long as they are aligning with the footprint that has been established. And then they are going to maximize the building height and try to get the attic, the the maximatic area that they can get. So the result will be, I'm afraid, of big or boxes, two and a half story high boxes. That is exactly where we were 20 years ago. So again, we shouldn't go backwards, but instead, we should look at what didn't work and how to improve it. So here is, in our opinion, what we think we should modify and what didn't work in EG Far. Number one is the open porches. I know that you already have looked at the open porches and agreed that open porches shouldn't be counted in EG Far, because open porches are not conditioned space, not livable space, they're, they minimally affect the the air and natural light, and in fact, they improve the the curb appeal and enhances the streetscape in our neighborhoods. And in fact, what happened is that, for instance, a town like Richwood, that has been very successful, is our experience has been, we love Richwood ordinance, it really works well. And they recently updated their ordinance to allow porches encroaching into the front yard up to five feet, with the condition that they will never be enclosed by screens or storm panels or windows. And that's a recognition that how important open porches are for the curb appeal. And also, Richwood, I should mention, Richwood doesn't count porches in EG Far, that for them is the GBA. So the second item is the attics. The attics, I haven't heard anybody mentioning, and these are, this is a very important item in the contribution for the volume of a dwelling. So for years, this has been a problem, because it was never defined clearly. The ordinance says the habitable attics, you you count for EG Far 60% of the habitable attics. And then we go to habitable attics, and it's no clear definition. So every time we have in a project, an attic where involved, an attic is involved, we have to go to Tracy and ask her, what what is the, what is the interpretation? This time, how should we count it? Does that count? Sometimes Tracy has even said, oh, well, wait a minute, I have to talk to the town attorney, because I really, I'm not sure. So the attics, and the problem is that the attics is like, you count it if it's finished, but you don't count it if it's on finish. But people then show it as unfinished, and when everybody's gone, they finish it, but the volume is still there. So our recommendation is to count attics that are finished or unfinished, with the areas where the ceiling is seven feet and above. So that will resolve the problem with with the attics, and it would be nice and clear. The third item is double height spaces. That's another one that hasn't been analyzed and is a major contributor to the volume in a house. So what the ordinance has now is, we don't count double spaces, two-story spaces. We count it only once, because we're counting only the floor area of the two-story spaces. But the space above doesn't have a floor, but is contributing to the volume. So our recommendation is count the two-story space twice, and that then we wouldn't have a problem with the volume, because it would be counted twice. And Jeffrey will show in his models how that would work and how, if we count this twice, how the volume will decrease. And the fourth item that we have is not EG Far, but is related to to the building coverage. And since we are discussing EG Far and building coverage, I better mention it, because this has been bothering me for 20 years, and is pools are counted as building coverage. Why? I mean, the zoning ordinance calls for counting building coverage in a structure eight inches and above grade, any eight inches. A pool is underground, it should be counted as impervious coverage, like patios. So I just wanted to mention that, even though it's not EG Far. So the ordinance, from our point of view, is a living document that requires maintenance to remain relevant to the needs of the time. So for instance, the pandemic, the pandemic taught us how how different we, all the different spaces that are necessary now, because people are working from home. So we often get as a requirement, we need an office, or sometimes it's, we need two offices, for her and for him. We have to count that, because, in other words, for the first floor, because these are areas that are required or best being located in the first floor, where the core of the home is. So that's one example. Another example is baby boomers. Baby boomers are starting to age in place, and that's that's a thing now in all zonings across Bergen County, aging in place. So that means that even though they have a small colonial, that they have been living there for 30 years, they now need to live on the first floor because of the stairs. And so that's area that is added to the first floor. The same thing with extended families. A lot of our clients in Glen Rock and Richwood are asking us, you know, my parents, one passed away, my mom is coming to to live with us, I need to have her on the first floor. Those things happen, and that is, that is needed in the second, in the first floor, sorry. So what the EG Far does is that it's giving us a number for the area as a volume, and then it's up to us how we are going to allocate that number. So if the maximum EG Far that I can have in the property is 3,000 square feet, let's say, well, if there is a family that needs a large first floor because the parents are moving in, or because they need two offices, they can have 2,000 square feet on the first floor, but they have the flexibility that to have then the rest, the 1,000 square feet in the second floor. And that way, we start carving the volume and creating interesting volumes that gives a variety of architectural styles, where we have breaks in the roofs, and that there are areas that have large first floor, and there are dormers in the second floor. And that's what gives the richness in the architecture and in the the streetscape in our neighborhoods. So if we start using and relying only in building coverage, we're going to lose that flexibility, because if we have the restriction of the building coverage, and we have to remember, we have the restriction already of the first 140 feet, not counting the entire the entire lot. And if we have that restriction of the first floor, what people are going to do is maximize the second floor and align with what is already approved. And as I said before, we are going to end up with bulky boxes of two and a half story What else did I want to say? Well, that's it. So the the recommendation in summary is open porches should not count in EG Far, attics with the ceiling height of seven feet and higher, the finished or unfinished should be counted in the EG Far. And the double height spaces definitely should be counted in the EG Far, and you'll see what I mean when Jeffrey start explaining and shows you the different models. So we hope that the planning board considers these revisions or these recommendations and to the EG Far, and instead of dismissing the EG Far altogether. And we believe that these modifications can make EG Far work and and do the intent that we had originally 20 years ago. And with the refinement of these definitions, we think that we can maintain the character of, the wonderful character of this town, that with the richness of architecture and the different volumes, giving still the flexibility to homeowners to allocate the areas wherever they need. Thank you for your time. And here is Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. So my presentation tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, should we ask questions of Mrs. Verena before she?
I think it's a joint.
Well, this way she could respond, and then he could continue would be better separately, I think.
We have kind of like a joint presentation, so is it, if it's okay to ask at the end?
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay. So good evening, members of the planning board. My presentation to supplement ZMRs is going to be a little bit more technical, so I'll do my best to kind of take us slowly through the numbers. So I first wanted to say, I appreciate the work that was done on the 3D models so far, both digital and physical, as they're great valuable tools to analyze bulk zoning. However, I do believe that the models being used are not an accurate representation of the average house in Glen Rock, and it's a little bit unrealistic compared to, you know, a house that we see normally in Glen Rock. So as a result, we're arguing that they do not make for a good comparison tool when comparing the proposed to the existing. So we developed a third model that I'll show you here that explains just that, and I'm going to go over that now. If anybody from the public would like to follow along, I do have some physical copies here that you can come up to take. I'll leave them right here. Okay. Okay. So we are seeing on the board, there's three models. There's a red, there's a purple, and there's a blue. So in red is the model that is currently currently being used as the existing zoning 3D model. So this is the largest, absolute largest volume house that you can have in Glen Rock in the A2 zone for a lot that is 11,200 square feet, which is the example model. Just for reference, this is an 80-foot by 100-foot property, 140 feet, my apologies. The purple is showing what was the proposed A2 zoning. This is when the building coverage was proposed at 20%. I know the board is considering changing that to 18%. I do have revised numbers that I can go over with you, but just for the sake of this diagram, we're going to use the 20%. And then in blue, we have the current A2 zoning. This is what we feel is a little bit more of an accurate representation of what we should be comparing to. So this is, it's the same regulations as the red model, being that the building coverage is at 25%, and it's also EG Far regulated. So I'm going to go specifically over the red versus the blue. So in the red model, we are showing that the absolute largest volume house is close to 74,000 cubic feet. This is utilizing that maximum building coverage of 25%. In this A2 property, we are at 2,800 square feet. This house would be matching that footprint at 2,800 square feet. We have a maximum EG Far of 32.88%. That's through that formula that we've been all talking about. That's 3,682 square feet. So in this example dwelling, you couldn't have two full stories of livable area in this red example here. So if you were to subtract the maximum EG Far, which is 3,682 square feet, you subtract the allowable footprint of the first floor, 2,800 square feet, you get allowable second floor of only 882 square feet. So this is drastically reduced via the building footprint. So this means to get this volume here, you would have 1,918 square feet of double height space. So that's roughly two-thirds of the footprint of having a double height space. So this is essentially the equivalent of having a two-story warehouse with a little mezzanine on the second floor. So while this is technically feasible through zoning regulations today, it's very impractical, and you just don't see that in homes. So now I would like us to move to the blue model. So the blue model is what we're arguing is a little bit more of an accurate model to compare to. So this would be the largest house by volume that you can have, again, in the A2 zone, where you're not utilizing double height spaces, you know, in the loophole. So we're regulated by the exact same zoning regulations as the one in the red model. You have the building coverage maxed at 25%. It's also EG Far related, so your EG Far, once again, is maximum 3,682 square feet. So in this example, you know, we can't use double height spaces. You're going to take the EG Far, you want to max out the EG Far in this example, just for the sake of this simplified model, we're going to divide the maximum EG Far in two. So you're going to have half the square footage on the first floor and half the square footage on the second floor. So by doing so, you get a dwelling footprint of only 1,841 square feet. So that would be, you have that on the first floor, and you have that on the second floor. And the building coverage only comes out to 16.44%. So you'll notice that this number is drastically reduced from the maximum building coverage of 25%. And this has to do with the EG Far. The EG Far regulates the maximum livable area and hence the volume. So even though we have a lot more building coverage available, the EG Far doesn't let us build anymore in this case. And we're arguing that the blue model is really what EG Far should be regulating in this town, not the red model. So I would like to move now to the purple in the middle. So the purple is what is proposed, at least as of the first meeting. So this would be if we were to get rid of EG Far and change the maximum building coverage to 20%. So in this case, 20% is 2,240 square feet. You could build a house with a footprint of exactly that. The house is no longer EG Far regulated, so you can do a second floor of exactly that number as well. number as well. And not counting the attic, you would have a livable area of 4,480 square feet. So this is an increase of almost 800 square feet from current standards today, despite the building coverage going down. So this would result in an increased volume, not a decreased volume. You'll see that in purple, we're showing the cubic feet as 59,000 cubic feet. So, you know, in the report, it does show a reduction of volume from the 74 to the 59 of 19%. That is correct. However, we're arguing that that red model is not the correct model to compare to. If you use the blue model, which we think is more accurate to Glen Rock homes, this will this change will allow an increase of 21.71%. So that volumes will get bigger, not smaller. So just to give you some updated numbers, I know that the planning board is considering reducing it to 18%. I ran those as well. I apologize they're not depicted on this, but if you were to do 18% for this example, once again, A2 zone, 11,200 square foot lot, the principal building would be have a footprint of 2,016 square feet at its maximum. If you were to double that, you know, once again, if you're not EG Far regulated, you can have that on the second floor, you'd have a total square footage livable area of 4,032 square feet. So this would be an increase of 350 square feet relative to today. I also calculated the cubic yards. We came out to about 53,000 cubic yards. So this would be another, it'd be 10% larger. So in this case, we were about 21% larger. If we reduced it down to 18%, we'd be about 10% larger than we are today.
Excuse me, just a clarification. Are you including attics in the blue or the red models?
So I do include the attics in the volume calculation, but I'm not including attics just for the sake of ease in the livable area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on. So beyond bulk, reducing structure coverage will have other ramifications in Glen Rock, you know, beyond just bulk. So as ZMR mentioned, it will allow for less flexibility in design. It will effectively encourage more square footage on the second floor and in the attic while discouraging space on the first floor. And then as ZMR mentioned, this runs counter to, you know, what are typical client needs, you know, more space on the first floor for family gathering, family activities, primary bedrooms on the first floor for aging in place, guest bedrooms on the first floor to accommodate, you know, aging parents, in-laws coming to live with you. So we took this another step further just to see how this change would affect projects in our office. So I have a chart here, the second chart. This is the last 50 jobs that we completed that were submitted to the building department. So we wanted to see out of these 50 jobs, how many jobs required a variance for bulk today? So on the left-hand side, you're going to see all 50 addresses in the blue here where it says current. You're going to see the existing EG Far maximum, the existing building coverage maximum of 25%, and then the actual results of the zoning analysis of each of these properties. So you can see out of these last 50 jobs, only one of our projects needed a bulk variance, and one was an existing nonconformity. However, if the change of the 20% goes into effect, 19 of our last 50 jobs would have needed a bulk variance. So as a result, we can just kind of conclude from this that a significantly higher number of projects would require bulk variances in town, which could overwhelm the building department and delay projects. So you could argue that we would just have to change how we design, we'd have to just design for smaller footprints, but what we're arguing is that our work is guided by the needs of Glen Rock homeowners. So and these needs may no longer be met if we have this reduced building footprint. And as a result, people may not want to move here. They might have to move out of town to get what they're looking for in their home. So kind of to conclude, thank you for bearing with me through this presentation. The most accurate way to quantify bulk is through volume, and volume is measured in cubic feet. Even though we have the technology to calculate total volume of a house, it's rather time-consuming and challenging to compute and to check by the building department. So instead, towns use EG Far, GFA, FAR, et cetera, as a simplified calculation to control volume. However, when the correlation between volume and EG Far is broken, which it is in Glen Rock, it doesn't do its job, and which is why you're seeing the overbuilding problem happening in Glen Rock. You can see there's a very vast difference in cubic feet, even though these are both complying structures. So we should strengthen the correlation between the EG Far calculation and volume, making the changes that ZMR already discussed would better limit the overbuilding problem that we're seeing. Revised EG Far would allow us to retain the same minimum or I'm sorry, maximum livable area or potential maximum livable area currently used to regulate homes in Glen Rock, but would eliminate all loopholes used to grow the volumes larger than what the EG Far calculation was intended for. It would also encourage open porches, which, as we know, soften the appearance of bulk in town. So we appreciate the opportunity to share our thoughts with you, and at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Howard, do you have any questions for the witnesses?
Yeah, in the blue model, were there any two-story spaces?
No, so no two-story spaces in the blue model.
Any questions by board members?
I mean, I just have a comment. I'm looking at the list of homes here that you say would need a bulk variance, and isn't that the purpose of us doing this is to reduce the bulk of homes? And this almost illustrates that we're doing what we set out to do. If you're building large homes that would no longer comply with what we're proposing, it would it would make you guys scale back the size of the homes, which is the task that we were assigned to do.
Correct. My counterargument to that would be that our office typically does not design homes utilizing double height spaces too much. We may do like a two-story entry foyer. On a very rare occasion, we'll do a double height family room. So I would argue that out of these 50 jobs, that none of them were considered a McMansion or too bulky or detrimental in the neighborhood. So the point of the diagram is to show, I think this is going to adversely affect, you know, a regular Glen Rock house. It's not going to do its job by limiting the McMansions, but is going to hurt the residents who have just a regular home, want to add to it. All of a sudden, they can't do so without a variance.
Just one additional comment to that question was that we don't, I felt looking at these homes, I don't think we can say conclusively whether they are too bulky or they are the homes we want to target or or not. So it could be, either of those could be true, and, you know, we don't really have a way to determine that without looking at all 25.
Yeah, that's very fair.
I actually have a question in the current A2 zoning, the blue model. When you say no double height spaces, are you proposing a change to the EG Far ordinance that to change that aspect of it? Or are you just saying that that's what it would be if there were no double height spaces?
Yeah, so this would be more of an example model to show if you didn't have any double height spaces, what would be the bulkiest volume that you can have? If, you know, the changes that ZMR mentioned, if they were to be adopted, you know, it would be the same exact maximum volume, because you can picture, you can choose whether you want to have a double height space in that same volume of that structure.
Because we are going to be, what we're proposing is to count the double height spaces twice. So it would be the same as not having double double height spaces. So that's the purpose of it.
So that would be the change.
I have a number of questions for the chairman.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Verena, for coming here and contributing to our situation in Glen Rock. I know you've been in Glen Rock a long time, you're right here on Rock Road, and you've done very well, very good work from what I understand. So I thank you both for being here and contributing. It is a big issue here in our town, I believe, this change, and from my understanding of it, and I'd like you to confirm it, is that the EG Far effective gross floor area as we know it is like you mentioned, and I agree with you, it's like a living document because of its flexibility. Is that correct?
Yes, it's not only because of its flexibility, but because we need, it needs maintenance. We need to review that every few years and see what is working and not working, and then change accordingly.
Yes.
And that's why I'm saying that instead of just dismissing the EG Far, is we should go back and analyze it and check what is not working, and that's that's why it's a living document. It's it's the same as building codes. Building codes are changed every three years because the needs are different and the problems are different. And as as the problems arise, then we find a way to to solve them, and the building will take a different shape.
I understand, and I agree, and I know what you're saying. In other words, it's like any relationship, you may have a problem here and there, but you don't just throw out the relationship out the window and create a new one that you may not know what the problems are going to be or intend the consequences, we call them.
Exactly.
So getting back to the EG Far, my understanding is that our present ordinance, as we call EG Far, I don't know if has anything to do with the master plan, but it's an ordinance concerning the floor area of a house, correct?
The the gross, yes, but.
Yeah, the gross floor area. And from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, our ordinance is based on the size of the lot, right? It's directly proportionate to the size of the lot. Of course, I understand that in the A1 and A2, we take 140 feet frontage from the A2 and 175 feet in the A1. I don't even understand why we're even addressing A1 because A1 is such a small area, there may be a couple of hundred houses there, and I've never heard of any problem there at all. So I don't even know why we're even addressing A1. I've never had any complaint about that area. Hey, it doesn't matter, it's besides the point. But the bulk of our houses are in the A2, 3,600 homes. So that's why I'm concerned, and I'm sure you're concerned, because our town is made up of 93% of housing, residential. Now, the proposed changes, from my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, the proposed changes are saying, forget about the lot, forget about the relationship with the lot, forget about the ratio of the lot, let's look at the building itself, not the lot, the building, the actual footprint. Am I correct?
No.
I'm not correct.
Correct, correct, you're not correct.
But what do we, what is what is the proposal based on?
We're still relating to to the, we're still relating to the lot, to the area of the lot.
Well, it's a lot, but I'm saying they're taking the, how you calculate the floor area is by the footprint of the house. Isn't that correct? They say you take the footprint and that will be your floor area.
What has been discussed by the planning board seems to be the footprint of the house that is the building coverage. We're saying, let's look at it further and let's consider the second floor and the attic, the floors above it. But it's still related to the area of the lot.
It's a percentage.
Well, I know it's the coverage, the related to, you can't be more than, apparently they changed it from 20 to now 18% of the covered lot. But the calculation is based on the size or the the footprint of the house. I think the example that they gave was the house, if it's the building in an 80 by 140 lot, if the house is 60 feet by 37, it would have a 2,220 square feet footprint, correct?
Yes.
And then you would double that because it would be two floors.
Yes.
So that's what I'm referring to, that it's related to the size of the footprint of the home.
Yes.
As opposed to our EG Far, which our EG Far has nothing to do with the size of the house, has to do with the proportion of the lot, the square footage of the lot times by the 30% or 35%. Am I correct?
Yes, you said the key point is the proportion.
Yes.
And that is true.
It's a ratio.
The the building coverage is about the area.
Right.
But the EG Far is about the proportions and the volume.
Yes, and the beauty of the.
The overall volume.
The beauty about our present ordinance EG Far, like you mentioned, it is flexible.
Yes.
Because there is also a scaling, scaling factor. Could you describe and tell us what that scaling factor is and how is it important to our community?
Yes.
Okay, I can answer that if that's okay.
Okay, Jeffrey, you are good.
Sure. So EG Far is the formula that we have. As you know, it's the 35% and you subtract the area of the lot or, yeah, area of the lot to the depth of 140 minus 900 and 9,500 square feet, which was discussed previously as maybe that was the average sized lot, times the .0000125. So this is what is known as a linear scaled adjustment formula. So as the lot size increases above 9,500 square feet, the percentage goes down, and as the lot size decreases below 9,500, the percentage goes up. So it's used in zoning to ensure that the larger lots are granted proportionally less density and the smaller lots are granted proportionally more density. And that is to maintain the consistent neighborhood scale and to prevent these oversized buildings from happening in town.
So in other words, if I live next to a big lot and I have a small lot, that lot next to me can build a house, but it has to be scaled down a little bit so it doesn't overshadow me or the rest of the neighbors. Is that correct?
Yes.
Now, does this proposal that is being made today concerning the lots, the house size, does that have that kind of flexibility?
So when you go up.
Besides the lot coverage.
Yeah, it's not going to, it's not going to increase or decrease proportionally, you know, relative to a like the scale of this formula. You know, if you have a bigger lot, you know, you have the same percentage of building coverage, so your building is going to get bigger, but not not in the right proportion to the scale of the neighborhood, in our opinion.
Right. So if I could rephrase something, because you're an expert and you've been in town, and especially Mr. Verena, who's worked here for over 25 years, 30 years, whatever it may be, is it your professional opinion that the EG Far scaling is an advantage for the Glen Rock community?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And also, let me ask you another question. Is it also your professional opinion that comparing the two systems of calculating the floor area, that there is no doubt in your mind that the proposed calculation would always be higher in the square, the floor area, comparing lot sizes?
It would depend on what that that number ends up being. So in my calculations, again, these are just, you know, examples. Purple is what is proposed at 20% or at 18%. I'm finding that it's going to increase the volume if the, you know, EG Far definition was corrected. So, you know, right now, you're seeing in the red model, somebody is, I'm going to use the word abusing double height spaces. The purple model does decrease that, does not allow for all those double height spaces to exist. But we were arguing that there's not a lot of houses that have two-thirds of the footprint of the house with a double height space. They're more like the blue model. So the proposed change to either 20 or 18% eliminating EG Far would increase the volume of, you know, the average home in Glen Rock.
It would increase it in the proposed.
Yes.
And increase the volume would also increase the floor area?
Yes.
So there's no doubt about that. So basically, what we're going to have is more bigger houses.
Slightly bigger, yes. 10 to 21% is what we're finding, depending on what number is chosen.
I don't know if you know the answer to this question I have, but I know when documents are being presented to the building department, there's usually a survey attached to the documents, correct?
Yes.
But is there such a thing as a a survey as built, meaning that after the building is done? Is that a requirement to obtain a CO in Glen Rock?
Yes.
You need a as-built survey?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad, because that would protect that the builder built it the way he said he was going to build it. Okay. And another question I have is, you've done a lot of work in Bergen County. Would you say that our way of calculating floor area, which is based on the lot size, a percentage of it, or the proposed concept of basing it on the building size, which is the more prevalent situation in Bergen County?
I don't know if you can really answer.
Why, let me, let them answer it.
We can. You're cross-examining.
If they know, if they know. If they don't know, they don't know.
Well, yes, we.
Which one is the more prevalent one?
The EG Far. Well, yes, we, the towns around, the, the EGFR...
The one that we have in Glen Rock, correct?
Yes. And in fact, twenty years ago, when that was implemented, we took as a, a model, Ridgewood, because they already had it and, um, Oradell already had it too. So we, we came in a little bit later.
So what you're suggesting is to retain our, our ordinance of EGFR, however, tighten up some of the loose ends or areas that are not definitive as to clear, clarify for the builders or homeowners. And that would include having, omitting open porches, correct?
Yes.
How about omitting a shed? Would you agree to that? Not calculating the shed as, as living area?
As, as the EGFR, if the ceiling is less than seven feet.
No, you're, no, that, that you were talking about was the attic. I'm talking about a shed.
And also the shed.
Also the shed?
Yeah.
Okay. And how about a detached garage? Would you include that or not exclude that?
In EGFR, I, I never agreed having the, the detached garages included in EGFR. And, and it's interesting that you have that question because, um, for instance, Ridgewood has a separate, um, allotment for detached garages. But, um, Oradell has the stipulation that if you are closer to the house, closer than ten feet, no, I'm sorry, twenty feet, you count the, the accessory building, the detached garage. But if your detached garage is further than twenty feet from the rear of the house, you don't count it.
I understand.
Because you don't perceive it.
I understand. So your position basically is tighten up on our regulations, but don't, don't eliminate EGFR. Is that correct?
I think you should, they testify that already. So does anyone else have any questions for?
I, I do have two quick questions. Um, one just for you, I think, Jeffrey. The scaling function you mentioned that Gabe asked you about, does that exist, as far as you know, in neighboring towns like Ridgewood's? Their ordinance has something similar?
It does. I don't know the formulas off the top of my head of other towns, but I knew, I know for a fact in Ridgewood it does.
Okay, thank you, and then, oh, sorry, yeah.
Oh, I would like to add that from what we know, the towns around, the only town that doesn't have the equivalent to EGFR is Paramus. So I'll, I'll just leave it as that.
And then the other question I had, I think, for you, C. Omar, is, um, one of the things we've heard from other people over the past few months is that one of the biggest issues with the current ordinance is the complexity of it and the challenges with enforcement and understanding the rules and how to apply them. From your experience, the two proposals, one for the just, uh, non-EGFR floor, or non-EGFR ratio that's proposed currently by the board or under draft, and the secondary proposal that you've made around tweaking EGFR, can you speak to the complexities that you would see trying to implement both of those two options?
I think that if, by doing the simple changes that we're proposing, it would make it very clear, for instance, attics, that, that whole discussion that whether we count attics or not, by saying, finish or unfinished, attics are counted as long as they are seven feet, the ceiling is seven feet and above. That's straightforward, two-story spaces, you count twice. That's it, no question about it. So whereas I, I find that when we say, well, we're going to have the building coverage at eighteen percent, but then we'll give you credit for this, and then we start looking for confusion there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you, in, in your three examples, uh, the, the red building is full buildout under the current zoning, twenty-five percent of capacity, building capacity, right? And then the current, and then the blue building, current A2, uh, they, there's a twenty-five percent limit, but your example shows that it's at sixteen point four percent coverage area. And that's because you take out, you don't add in the EGFR calculation, double space or double story. Any other limitations in that, in that calculation?
Um, it really is just, you know, regulated by EGFR. Um, so this is just showing an example how, you know, even if you have a larger footprint available to build, if you want to have, let's say, a two-story colonial. Um, in the case of current zoning, no double height spaces, but we're proposing, you know, we should count them regardless of whether it's double height or not. Um, this would be the largest structure that you could have, um, you know, EGFR regulated.
And, uh, I'm sorry, in the blue, in the blue one, is that assuming the attic spaces finished?
Uh, so in this particular example, with the existing, uh, actually, I guess existing proposed, the attic doesn't count. It is just for a simplified, um, you know, model.
The blue drawing is the smallest volume that you can maximize the FAR. The blue and the red are opposite extremes. The red is the largest volume you can get and use your FAR candidly in inefficient way. And the blue drawing is, how small can we make the house and maximize the FAR? I think the answer is probably somewhere in between.
And can you just clarify again that, I don't believe all of these show it, that there is a cap?
Yeah, I think more important than that proportionality is the uppermost cap, and most towns don't do that. And I think it's a, it's a very good thing, given your long, deep, narrow lots here, is that the floor area is capped at a forty-four hundred and fifty-five hundred square feet right now, which translates to a maximum, uh, footprint, regardless of lot size, of twenty-two hundred and twenty-seven fifty. So if, if, if we were just calling it a two-story structure. So that works out pretty well. I, I think, I think the big concern here, I, I think, is, I think we're all moving in the same direction. I think what they're looking for is a lot more flexibility to make the footprint bigger, to make more first floor spaces until we have partial seconds. I think if we're, if we're doing this, I think it probably makes more sense to go with the, maybe the coverage has to be tweaked a percent or two, uh, but I think that makes a lot more sense than now you have an FAR calculation that's pretty cumbersome as it is. And now we're calculating unused floor area in floor area ratio. We're calculating imaginary floor area in floor area because we're double counting two-story spaces. If my foyer is sixteen feet tall, is that two-story or is it one-story? If it's twenty, it's probably two. If it's sixteen, it probably only counts as one. I mean, it, 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 so there's a whole nother set of things that happen when you do it this way. I, I, I still am an advocate for using, eliminating the EGFR. Uh, I think they've provided great input in terms of the architectural interest and not penalizing people for making interesting spaces and open porches. And I think we tried to accommodate that in the last set of revisions by adding two percent back in. We're also not penalizing, uh, the accessory buildings the way we used to in the ordinance where you've got an extra four percent in both of the zones to do accessory buildings, particularly detached garages and sheds and things like that without, without a penalty to, to the owner. So I, I think the only thing that we're disagreeing on is the ability to do a fairly substantial first floor and a more modest set of upper floors. And, uh, I'm not sure how we work that out, but I don't think floor area ratio is the way to do it.
I have a question then, for everybody. In the blue model, you're stating that's the most and you're using essentially two full floors. But if the clientele who doesn't want, for lack of better terms, the box and wants something or wants for your elder customers that want to live there or bring in family, you still have, you don't have to build the blue box. You could enlarge, you still have space, being as you were sixteen percent, to enlarge your first floor and make your second floor smaller, correct?
Yes, correct.
And then you can, again, either way, choose to have two-story spaces or not. So you're still configuring by what, what your client wants. My other, I guess, concern is, and I, I think it's a, a public concern, which is why the, the little boxes, which I brought, I can put back out again, the little drawings of the red and purple from last week, um, everyone's concentrating on the volume number. It's not, or I guess the public's not on the volume number, but all the professionals and, and some of the questions have been, it's, it's not the volume number that the complaints are. So whether the box is this big and it's fifty-nine or it's forty-eight inside, it's what it looks like from the street. So although we say the volume of the house, I refer to it more as the bulk of the house, not to a specific number, but to what it looks like. So last week, they said, I believe it was addressed to Gabe, which house do you want to live next to? Is kind of the more visual of, of then everyone concentrating on this volume number of cubic feet. So I guess those are just my two, two comments.
Well, you've got setbacks and you've got height. So you're going to get a width of a facade. Whether, whether that space is two and a half stories or, uh, one story and then two and a half behind it, the facade, if you look at it in a planned view, is going to be the same mass in terms of the outline. You know, it's, it's a different arrangement of boxes, but it still is the same mass from the street.
Well, it's not necessarily true. I mean, if it's set back on the side further or in the back, or you're looking at it from an angle, it wouldn't actually appear the same to a neighbor.
What I'm saying is if we're going across maximam, maximizing the width of the home, and if the house is, just goes straight up thirty-two feet, or whether there's a, a room on the first floor that's fifteen or twenty feet deep, and then it goes up, when you look at it straight on, it, it, the outline is the same.
I understand. I would disagree that it's, I would, I think it's a meaningful difference, those two things, in the appearance to the neighborhood.
I just want to ask members of the board if anybody needs a five-minute break. We've been going for over an hour and a half.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, five minutes, please.
Members, please turn off your mics. You guys too, please, thank you.
Okay. I think we're all back.
Um, hold on. Members, please turn on your mics. And we're back on.
Okay, so the board was still asking questions. Are there any more questions for the board or witnesses?
Um, I would like to, um, Tracy had asked a question, if I can answer that.
Sure.
So I think I know where you're kind of coming from as far as volume goes. Um, so yes, you could have, uh, House B that has less volume than House A. And A may appear less bulky due to how it's designed, if there's a porch, or if it was like well-intentionally designed. But when it comes to a zoning ordinance, we can really only manage bulk through numbers and not through design, um, which is why I think the conversation has been around volume. Yeah.
Just hold, press it, it'll, oh, you died.
Okay.
Your battery died.
You don't want me to talk, Tracy.
I'll always let you.
Thank you. So, uh, when I was thinking about your comment that, uh, we're penalizing, uh, by not having two sto-, by counting two-story, um, uh, double high, um, space twice, I don't see it as penalizing. It's that the volume is a volume, and if we counted, we counted. So it becomes irrelevant if we have a, a space two stories or we have two rooms. Uh, we're not penalizing. So then I could say, well, you're penalizing with the building coverage being reduced, you're penalizing people that need to have, to live mainly in the first floor.
I, I think we're, I think we're agreeing. The, the, the issue is volume, and what you're suggesting is something that I didn't consider was the, uh, the need or the desire to have a bigger first floor in, in a particular environment. So I, I'll, I think we'll take another look at that, but I think, I don't think we need to get into floor area ratio to do it, because we're all saying it's volume. So if we, if we can deal with that, uh, let, let me think about it a little bit. It's a, it's a different approach.
Ms. Brothers, oh, okay.
I was just gonna add another comment.
Oh. Time to go home.
Yeah. Sorry, guys. Um, just to kind of, I do agree with you that the, the red and the blue model are the two extremes. Yeah. Um, and I think that's really the root of the problem, is that the ordinance has this gigantic loophole in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that allows both the red and the blue to be quote-unquote "the largest volume" that you can build on that lot. You know, if we do just control it by structure coverage, um, it does, it would limit that first floor area. I think something would have to happen to control the second floor and the attic though, still, because what we're showing is that the houses would still get bulkier even if we reduce it down to eighteen percent. Yeah.
Ms. Brothers, just another question that you referred to concerning the bulk variances that, for the zoning board. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What would require somebody to, uh, go to the zoning, zoning board for bulk variance? Can you explain that a little bit further in light of the new proposal? How would it trigger more bulk variances? Requests?
Well, because, because if the building coverage is reduced, um, then, from twenty-five percent, from twenty-five percent to eighteen percent, uh, the majority of the houses, at least in the old district, um, where the lots are smaller, will be over. Will be over in the building coverage.
From your experiences that you've had in cases in Glen Rock, you've determined that if that were to be the, the rule, or the law, or the ordinance, it would require your customers or your, to, uh, go to the zoning board to request variances for bulk?
Yes, for specifically in building coverage.
And that would inundate the zoning board?
Well, I think she's just saying that the building coverage is on.
Well, let her say what she wants to say.
Well, you're trying to pin.
I'm not pinning her, I'm asking her a question.
Well, it's not exactly what she said, but.
Let her say what she said. Would you re- repeat what you were talking about, the bulk, please?
That if the building coverage is reduced, then we will have the result, uh, more variances on building coverage.
Request for more variances to the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I, I think it's pretty clear that, uh, we're gonna have to have more discussions. I think the subcommittee's gonna have to meet further. And, uh, so I think, but I'd like to hear from the public.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And, and Scott Bella in particular. But, uh, so if we could move, is everybody okay with moving on to public, public section?
Yes.
Great, great.
And we, we're definitely taking, I'll put my, my gun since I was yelling at everybody. Definitely, thank you so much for the input. It's very important. Um, it's definitely something the committee, um, wanted, and we want all aspects, all possibilities to make, for the borough to make the right decision. Again, we don't, we don't make it, the board will make recommendations, uh, council ultimately decides on that. Um, but we definitely want all the input. We'll, we'll look forward to more if we have questions, and if you guys can make it next month also.
We'll be happy to.
Yeah, we would love that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for, um, listening to the long presentation, too.
No, it was wonderful.
Thank you.
We appreciate, we appreciate very much.
Thank you very much. Really do appreciate your hard work. It makes sense. Okay, listen.
Mr. Bella? Oh, you have a third pass.
Wonderful. Nice one.
Where'd that dormer come from?
Thank you.
Hello, hello. Uh, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank, uh, Ziamara and Jeffrey for their wonderful presentation. I think it's, uh, a job well done. I think we're all here for the same reason, and that is to fix a problem that we see out there, which is bulk, in my opinion, bulk. I think it's important to realize that, you know, we're looking to reduce down the bulk. There are a couple homes in town. I don't think it's, um, a majority of homes in town that are overbuilt. I think there were, uh, a, a bunch of homes recently that were overbuilt, which is why we're all here this evening. And I think a reduction should be looked at, and I think that the board's, uh, direction is, uh, a good direction in going from FAR to building coverage. And the reason I say that is because the current, um, in, in, in the presented tonight, that the red, um, presentation, or the current FAR, is shown in a model here. And the current purple, which is the proposed twenty percent, is shown in a model here. I did not build the blue model, because I didn't, I didn't have enough time to build the blue model, but the blue model is significantly smaller. However, I think that in the new proposed, um, which in my opinion, I think is significantly too small, because you're asking for a thirty-five percent reduction of what's being allowed today. Thirty-five percent is a lot, um, in terms of what's out there. And you could potentially stagnate, I don't know, hundreds of houses overnight by, by a thirty-five percent reduction. What, what I think we should look at in the, in the blue scenario is, yes, I agree, the flexibility's important. And this year is the flexibility. This is a twenty-five percent building coverage with, uh, small dormer addition on top of it. And if you look at the bulk, it's very similar to what is current today. It's very much bigger than what is being proposed by the board at twenty percent. You guys can come closer, because, because you can't really see it from there. So I think you gotta look at the worst-case scenario. And I think that the, the blue scenario here, although it makes sense, um, to have an eighteen-hundred square foot house and go directly over it, and that makes sense in terms of the numbers of getting to that ig for thirty-six-hundred-eighty-two square feet, however, it's a sixteen percent building coverage. And if you leave the twenty-five percent rule in place, this is what you can build, um, under the coverage. So you can go to twenty-five percent, put a dormer addition on the second floor, and the bulk is essentially the same as what is current today. I do agree that the, um, the spaces on the second floor, I don't think anyone's gonna build this building today. However, it's possible. And I think zoning is supposed to protect the one or two people who want to do this from not doing it. And I think that the most protection is the twenty percent rule, um, building coverage, because I think the most important thing is to reduce the footprint of the building, and then you can't do a bulky house. When you have a twenty-five percent building coverage, you can come up with a bulky building, in my opinion. And I think it shows here, this is to scale, this is just math, um, I think it, I think it shows that today's scenario, uh, potential, uh, blue scenario, I'll call it, um, and potential twenty percent rule, whether that twenty percent is broken down into eighteen and two, or nineteen and one, in my opinion, is better, um, I think is, uh, you know, something to be, to be looked at. And I think that the planner brought up a good point, is that we're looking to do something, and you have one extreme on one side, you have another extreme on the other side, I think somewhere in between is where we, we need to fall in place. I think one thing that we haven't talked about, um, I think that the board is doing a good job when they put a small percentage as an incentive to put in porches, because I think that would add character to a home. I, I believe that two percent might be a little too high. I think it should be nineteen and one as opposed to eighteen and two. And the reason why is because, in my opinion, one percent of a ten thousand square foot house is a five-foot by twenty-foot front porch. I think that's enough. I think that two percent is enough if you want to do a large, um, covered deck in the back or covered patio, but that doesn't do anything to reduce bulk, or that, that doesn't do anything to help the front of the house look, um, aesthetically pleasing. So I, I would rather see, if we go eighteen and two, one percent for porches, and then that other one percent, let's take a look at allowing the client, customer, to potentially do a two-foot cantilever in, 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 on the second floor, over and above the eighteen percent, because that would allow us to now have character in the house and, and have ins and outs, as opposed to, if you have a twenty percent coverage, you're gonna have a box and people are gonna come straight up. But if you give that allowance to have a little bit of a, a two-foot cantilever, I'm not asking for a, you know, a six-foot cantilever so they can, you know, uh, you know, uh, have a huge second floor, but a two-foot cantilever, which is allowed today to encroach into setbacks, that kind of thing, two-foot cantilever would allow you to, uh, push and pull the building and give it a little more character. I think that the porch is gonna give it character. I think if you allow that little two-foot cantilever, um, I think that's gonna help as well. So my, my contention is that I think the board's looking at, um, uh, twenty percent, whether it's eighteen and two or nineteen and one, whatever, whatever the number is, I think it's a good number in that you have the surrounding towns, Ridgewood is at twenty percent, Paramus is at twenty-five percent building coverage, Fairlawn, twenty-five percent building coverage, Midland Park, twenty-five percent building coverage. So I think we're heading in the right direction with twenty percent, um, and that would be in line with the rest of the, the neighborhood. So I think overall, uh, the board is heading in the right direction. I think we have, you know, two, two basic extremes as, here, and I think somewhere in the middle would be, uh, the way to go. And the, the middle is basically looking at a twenty, based on, based on their analysis and my analysis, it's about a twenty percent reduction of what's allowed today in terms of bulk. So I think a twenty percent reduction is still pretty hefty, but I think it gets us to the point where we're gonna have smaller homes in town, which I think is the overall gist of what we're looking to do.
Mr. Bella, just a quick question.
Yes.
The models that you prepared, uh, first of all, I'm, I'm sure they're prepared to scale, correct?
Hundred percent to scale, yes.
And, uh, also, you're referring to the A-two zone, I mean, yeah, A-two zone.
Only A-two zone, correct.
Do you have any problems with the A-one zone? I, I think we should just leave that alone. Is there any problems that you, you see?
I haven't had any yet. I don't, I don't do much work in the A-one, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, in the A-one zone.
A-one.
Uh, yes, I don't do much work. I don't see any problems, yeah.
It's a small section of town, maybe five percent of town.
Yeah.
So why are we addressing that?
I don't.
I'm just saying. You have no criticism, you have no criticism of the present zoning?
No, I don't.
And the present ordinance concerning A-one?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. What do you want to say?
You were just asking him over and over the same question.
Can I ask, um, you had said that if it was eighteen percent, one percent for porch, would, would you prefer that it's specified as, like, for front porch for the aesthetics from the street?
Well, I think, I think that if you're gonna go, if you're gonna go twenty percent total, I think it should be nineteen, and then one percent for a front porch aesthetic.
But if we did the eighteen, one, and I don't know technically if you're gonna call eighteen, one, and one, um, besides the cantilever option as the second portion of that, what do you feel about one per, so one percent front covered porch?
I think.
And a one percent back for like the covered patio?
I think, I think maybe what we should look at is, if you go eighteen and two, leave the two percent for front porches, cantilevers, or a rear covered area.
Okay.
Give, give the option to the homeowner.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it is important to have, to give them the option. But again, I, I'm leaning towards nineteen and one, just to, just to go on the record.
Okay, well, thanks, Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I keep the house? Oh, you can leave it there for now.
Don't drop it.
I'll, I'll get it later. Thank you.
I promise, I can keep, I can make this quick. Hi, everybody. So when I purchased my.
Could you?
Oh, so my name, sorry. So my name's Julia Cedaroth, um, and I live at eighty-nine Glen Avenue.
Thank you.
Sure. So when I purchased, uh, my home, uh, years ago, um, I felt, I still feel such pride in becoming a resident of Glen Rock. I, I can remember vividly going into work and telling people, you know, I live in Glen Rock now, and I think I've lost count of the compliments, truly. Like, I, I think the most common thing I heard were, oh, Glen Rocket has those historic, charming homes and great schools, and I was like, yes, that's right. Uh, I live there now. And I think we need to protect that reputation, and it sounds like that's what everybody agrees with here. I think in a lot of cases, some of these homes in question are, there are real estate investors in play, um, that I don't then care about tho- those things I just mentioned, like maintaining character, um, and they're really focused on profit, which has to do with time and money. I think a portion of this, I'll get to it towards the end, does involve time. I know, like, in the current house listings right now, for some of, uh, of these, like, big white boxes, um, as I call them, uh, the time in which they were purchased and then relisted, so in that time, if you look on, like, Google Maps, those were capes and things that got torn down and fully rebuilt. The typical time looks like it's six to seven months, um, that they undertook that big construction, uh, effort. I feel like that's fast, so that says Glen Rock's somewhat, um, builder-friendly with permitting and such, but I'm more here to, um, present, I think it's so helpful to have these three D models and visuals, but they are a bit hypothetical. They're also, I think, really critically focused on eighty-foot wide lots, um, which, when you don't have an eighty-foot wide lot, some of these metrics, which are, I mean, I went to school for engineering and I find these hard to keep up with, all the math, but, um, I think they can change pretty dramatically and be pretty punitive towards those of us that have narrower lots. And I'm not convinced that some of these tweaks would necessarily drive out these house flippers, um, but I wanted to present an example of, I think, who potentially, I really hope not, but could get driven out of town, which are families like mine. So I live at eighty-nine Glen. I think a lot of people probably know that house really well. It's the first house after the post office on Glen Avenue, so it's right next to the train parking lot. So you park in the train parking lot, you might be looking at the side of my house. And I, it's, it's a pretty modest house. It's, I don't think a mega house by any means. It's, uh, I think the livable space, it's about sixteen hundred, but. It's, I think the livable space, it's about 1,600, but it hasn't been updated in 24-plus years. I think it was, you know, loved dearly and cared for by the previous family, but not much changed in terms of, you know, the layout, or interior, or even the exterior, which I think at this point, I feel personally, is not at the level of, you know, the character and history of a lot of the homes on my block. My, like, enclosed front porch, my one neighbor tells me it's the original, it has aluminum siding on it, which I don't feel is, like, on par with the Dutch Colonial across the street, for me, that's so beautiful, or the Rouses Tudor, or even the two houses next to me that are also on narrow lots, that have been improved, I think, more recently than my house has. So I've been saving up for four years to try and improve it, partially the exterior. But two years into the four years of savings, so about two years ago, I found out I was pregnant with twins. So I have one-year-old twins right now, and my parents, and the help that they've been able to give me, has been, like, integral, which was something when I purchased my home, I thought, oh, we both live in New Jersey, that's great, they're an hour away. And as, you know, I was talking with them, my mom's watching the twins now, she put them to bed, but I really would like for them to be able to stay with me and be able to watch the twins, they love it here also. But I think, as Emar pointed out, it would be ideal if they could be able to stay on the first floor, otherwise, it's a very vertical living, and there's not really much space on the second floor either, it's basically two bedrooms, a very small third one. And so I had hoped to, and started to discuss, the ability to make a very small extension, just one floor, so there's nothing, you know, towering or anything like that off the back, which in fact would be about equal depth with my two neighbors, who also have narrow lots. But in any, if anyone wants to walk by and see a real-life example, 89 Glen Avenue, its current footprint is 21% of, it's the 50-foot wide, now, my lot's 200 feet deep, but the way we're calculating all these things, with the first 140 feet, that basically means, like, more than 33% of my lot, when we say lot size, I know what we mean, but it kind of frustrates me, because 33% of my lot is irrelevant, or not used, in these calculations. I think I understand why, you know, we don't want some awkward, deep, narrow house that takes up the whole lot, that would be strange, but I think if you look at my house now, it's not a mega house, I don't think it has a lot of mass, but it exceeds this, this, like, standard that we'd be implementing. The 18% would mean, the current plans I was hoping to have, just to make my house the same depth as my neighbors, would be a 7% variance, which I think, from looking at even the lists that were shared today, that's unusual to be approved. So when I heard that this might be passed, I was really alarmed, because I feel that these homes, especially the older ones that are closer to town, there, it's not uncommon to be on a lot that's narrower than 80 feet, and, you know, and some of them, in fact, too, are deep, and so we kind of lose the benefit of full size of our lot, and being shrunk down to this 140 feet deep. And for just wanting to have a kind of small modification, or, you know, improvement, which I think all my neighbors are really excited about, they helped recommend an architect, and they're, I think, very excited to have the siding, and all these things I've mentioned, you know, the porch opened up, porches have come up today, because it's currently like a Four Seasons porch, that just basically doesn't get used. So I was hoping, you know, it could actually fit the character of Glen Rock better, but with this change, I don't know how I could implement it. And I just thought, since I got quite caught up in this, I did research a few other things that I think, you know, other towns have implemented. I think the limiting Agfar, I don't know, like I said, if it fully addresses the issue, and if going down to 18% building coverage, if that really leaves out, or at least behind, the narrow lots, and if, in fact, you would then begin to get a lot more people coming in here for variances that have just narrower lots, or unusual-shaped lots. But I did find that other towns have things like percent destruction rules, so there's ordinances for demolishing, like, say, 40 or 50% or more of the existing structure, and if it's, it's assessed values set to change that much, it would go through a stricter set of rules, where perhaps, things like this could be implemented for when a kind of full teardown is going to take place. But for houses like mine, that would not be the case, and so the standard perhaps could be different, or at least stratified, or at minimum, too, just stratifying some of these numbers based on lot width, which I believe, like Ridgewood has, like, a narrower lot has a different kind of, you know, regulated numbers against it than, say, a 100-foot wide lot, because it can really affect, you know, the width is a key metric, I think, that doesn't get looked at in our current approach. But there's also contextual design reviews, so that's consideration of material size and in keeping with the rest of the street or the neighborhood. And then there's tiered permitting, which I think is when, you know, someone who's trying to add, you know, improve their master bathroom, doesn't necessarily have to go through this thorough process as someone tearing down a home and building one that's, you know, 50% larger. One could be expedited, another one could go through a different sort of review that might have different standards applied against it. I think time would be a huge deterrent to some of these investors, if I had to guess, whereas someone like me, I've already been living in my house for four years, and if I had to wait an extra month or two to implement what I wanted to do, that would be no problem. I think to some of these flippers, that is more of a problem. But I guess, overall, I just wanted to provide a real example of who this would affect, I think in a way that we're not trying to, you know, affect, I don't think we're trying to prevent houses like 89 Glen Avenue from just being updated and made in keeping with the rest of the town, which is absolutely my intent, and the ability to have my parents be able to stay there and not do sets of stairs. So I'm just hoping I might take time to reconsider the 18%, or at least how it might impact lots that are not 80 feet wide, and I, because I really hope the twins could go to school here, I've envisioned them going to Glen Rock High School, and so when I heard this, I just immediately thought, oh, no, like, what if I can't do that, what if this can't happen? But thank you, that's all I wanted to say for today.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to, during our subcommittee, we'll try and make up some numbers for a 60, a 50, or a 60-size lot.
That would be great.
Sure. We can analyze it all together.
Jim Garfalo, 140 Midwood Road in Glen Rock. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time and effort in order to solve this problem. But I think, in some cases, you're being influenced by people who are really concerned with just making money on the backs of the Glen Rock people. When I say that, we all know that houses are sold by the square foot, and if a person can make a house as large as they can, with extra square footage, they're going to make a lot of money, okay? That's the bottom line. In this town, the bottom line is money. And this is what your people are facing right now, okay? There have been some houses, we all know, built in this house, in this town, that are technically illegal, you need a variance to change it, okay? Why that happened, I don't know, but I do know that I'm a little concerned about it, because I've seen some houses in town that just, quote-unquote, "don't fit." Why I'm here, I'm here to give my little contribution, all right? I live in a house in a neighborhood where the lots are 60 feet by 125 feet, okay? Everybody's talking tonight about lots that are 80 feet wide. Well, 20 feet's a big difference, a very big difference, you all know that. We're all big people, we're adults, okay? My house is called a one-and-a-half-story Cape. Okay, one-and-a-half-story, that means you can put something on the second floor, but you know what? I don't have an attic. I've got maybe four feet from the rafters to the, to the ceiling, the ridge line, okay? Big deal. My house is roughly 24, 26 by 36, okay? Little addition on the back, pay a lot of taxes, as we all do, okay? A house has been built across the street from me that meets all the requirements, as I've been told by Stacy, that you have in the books. It's a 32-foot monster. I would not buy that house. I saw it being built, I see what it looks like, it is not very attractive, in my opinion. Some of you may like it, some of you may not. The gentleman is asking approximately, I think, 100, and, 1.8? 1.8, yeah, that's what he's asking for the house. The house, needless to say, dominates all the other houses around it, either side of it, for sure, and many of the other houses. Some of the houses on my street have been reconditioned, rebuilt, finished up, and they look very, very attractive, but they aren't 32 feet high, I don't think. One of the reasons I'm here is to ask you people to consider the people in my situation that have a lot 60 by 125, one-and-a-half-story house, and we're having a house put next to us 32 feet high. I would like to see you change the height restrictions in some of the neighborhoods like mine, where the houses are not 32 feet high. Make the houses more compatible with the houses that already exist. In closing, I'd just like to say that I've been in town 50 years, I've seen people come and go, some good, some bad, some indifferent, some contributing, some not contributing. But I will say this, I've seen people come into this town lately, that I don't know where they come from, but it seems like they want to change a lot of things, whether it be some of the rules, regulations, the housing regulations, or whatever. I just wonder where the town is going. A builder said something, I think it was last week or two weeks ago when I was here, that if we're not allowed to build bigger houses, people are going to go someplace else. Well, I went through Paramus today, and I saw some of the houses that are in Paramus. Paramus used to be a nice little sleepy old town, farm town. You look at it nowadays, you wonder where the heck everybody has gone. What has happened to this town? Matter of fact, I taught in that town for over 30 years. I see the same thing happening to this town that happened to Paramus. Anyway, it's a shame that I have to speak like this about my town, but I really feel that we're on a down slope, folks, and I hope that you people realize it, and you can see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Lee Emmer, I'm almost a 30-year resident in Glen Rock. I live in town, I invest in town, I build in town, I rent some property in town, so I'm what you call a guy looking at it from all different frames. I've been following this very closely.
I'm sorry, can you just state your address, please?
I live at 10 Yardley Court, and I own a number of different properties in town. So I've been watching this go from, I've got a small lot, and I've got a big lot, I've got everything in between. I'm supportive of the 20%, I have concern, as you heard, with the smaller properties, because I don't think, if you go 16, 17, 18, it's difficult. I've watched some of the buildings go up, which I think are appropriately, the architecture is very nice, in my opinion, not the ones that I obviously built, but by others as well, and I support it. I support it because, with times, things change. Unfortunately, you guys have to make those decisions, in terms of taking us in the right directions. Certain instances, you know, taste is not something that, you know, we can opine on or have issues with, I understand and appreciate what people don't like that some builders have done, but that's, whether you have it at 18%, 25%, you're going to run into those challenges. I think 20% gets us to where we need to go. The issue is, on the smaller lots, the 60 by 100, 110, 7,075 square feet, you know, a family coming in that wants to make an addition, right? You're, A, you're going to be in varianceville, because for the last 50 years, you've been at 25% floor area coverage ratio. So now we're going to take everybody back, and have to come back for a variance every time we do a renovation or an addition. I have three girls, took them through the school system, you know, they all grew up, hopefully they come back. The reason I bought another house, right, as a rental, one day they can come back and live the Glen Rock dream, so. But times are changing, you know, we're not looking to build 6,000-square-foot monstrosities, we're talking about 4,400 square feet. So if, even the 25%, at the end of the day, your sidesetbacks and your fronts and height have been in existence for quite some time. What we're talking about is somebody wants to finish a closet, somebody wants to have a bigger bathroom, somebody wants to finish the interior space that we're having difficulties with. Whether you don't like the roof lines, or what they've done, right, that's personal opinion. But at the end of the day, I understand you're wanting to bring it in, so you don't have to police what they finish or don't finish on the inside, makes sense. But let's not get to an extreme, where people, you know, that want to make a renovation, want to make an addition, want to put up a house that people actually have enough first-floor living space, you want to add a great room, a first-floor bedroom, you're not going to be able to do it on 20%, you're not. And that's going to be very difficult for the needs of our community. You know, I have an older dad, if I want him to come into one of my, you know, properties, I'm going to be in the same predicament as you heard today. So 20% gets us there, you have to look at the lots that are under 75 or 8,500 square feet, so you can accommodate what's necessary in the context of that, where you were at 25%. You can't just say, okay, that's at the window, everyone's in this. And then the other flip side is, you know, there are a lot of retirees here who are going to be selling their lots, right? What is in the economic interest of the town, from a tax revenue, from an education perspective, from, you know, as a fiduciary to this town, how do you promote change? Change is going to come, right? We don't live in the 50s anymore, right? We're going to have new builds all the time, homes will get recycled, whether you like, you know, the builders coming in or out or not, but we have to find something that makes sense and doesn't restrict people going to Wyckoff, Ridgewood, Franklin Lakes, they're higher floor area ratios, right? We want those people coming in, supporting the town, investing in the town, and growing the town. So I thank you all for your time and effort, obviously, I wear all the different hats, I am supportive of both, you know, architects' plans, but I think 20% should be the minimum, but you guys will, you know, take that into consideration with the lot size, because the setbacks and the heights have existed for a long time. All we're talking about is finishing the inside space for use. People want closets, they want attics that they could have a study in, an office, a home office, you heard today. You know, the Agfar we're trying to address is really what people finish and police on the inside. All right. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make it short. Please state your name and your address.
Yes, it's 1 Glen Avenue, first name Kay Tuitt, I'm the zoning board, here in town, and I've lived here a long time. By the same token- By the same token, I want to commend you and my other members on the zoning board and the gentleman to my right. This is, it's important, it's a very desirable town, and I'm much in favor of the discussion of a porch and the requirements, not the requirements, but the ability, from a simple standpoint of, we want neighborhoods to be back to what they used to be, from the standpoint of they, bring a neighborhood together, you're on your porch, or your stoop, or whatever it is, and you feel that neighborhood feeling, you participate, and that's what I see frighteningly so, is there isn't enough town participation, and I'm speaking from the standpoint of what we could be doing, and if the porches help us bring in back to that, that's a good thing. So, thank you. First of all, you do an awful lot of hard work, and I appreciate that, and congratulations for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing, everybody? Roy Clipper, 142 Winslow Terrace. First, I'd like to thank all you guys for all the hard work you do as well. I'd like to thank the two architects who came in. My main reason for coming tonight was also to echo, I think, with the other three people and this lovely lady said, you guys really need to consider the small lots. I've received many phone calls over the last couple of weeks from elderly people, people also in town who are saying, hey, we're going to sell in the next three years, should we sell now because we're concerned that we're going to lose value in our property because we have a smaller lot? So please consider that. The other note that I would just like to say is, their presentation was amazing, you can tell, put a lot of hard work in there, but it seemed like it was a little bit geared towards Ridgewood. Ridgewood, as we know, has properties that are tremendously large, the largest property in Ridgewood is 3.3 acres, so I think just please consider that. A lot of the regulations, for instance, that Ridgewood has, is put in place to not overbuild on those large lots. There's about 50 properties, if not more, that are over one acre, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that, and thank you again for your time.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, if not, I'll close the public section. So as I mentioned before, we're not going to vote tonight on the proposed resolution. We need more work. I think the subcommittee's going to reconvene, and we've got more thinking to do.
I think so.
Yeah.
It was very substantive commentary, though. There were a lot of very important things.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming out. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor? All right.
Members, please turn on your lights. Yes, thank you. I wanted this one off.